Good evening and welcome, everybody. We will call to order the February 4, 2020, meeting of the City of Everett Planning Commission, and we will commence with a roll call.
Chair Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner Lavera.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Commissioner Zelinski.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Commissioner Lark.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
So I hope everyone has a chance to review the minutes. Does anybody have any comments or revisions?
Move to approve.
Second. Have a vote.
Commissioner Finch.
Yes.
Commissioner Lark.
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn.
Abstain.
Commissioner Zelinski.
Abstain.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavera. Yes. Chair Yanisak.
Yes. Do we have any commission members with any reports? Start at the end.
No report from me, thank you.
Nothing to report.
No report.
No report?
None.
No report.
None here either. Staff comments?
A couple of comments. One is that the city council did ultimately adopt the, an ordinance removing supportive housing from single-family zones on publicly-owned sites at their meeting last week. And so it took, it was a little bit of a delay from their original schedule, but took final action last week. The other announcement would just be, next meeting, and I'm trying to remember our subject, man, probably more of the rethink zoning, some more non-residential uses. So we'll continue making progress with the rethink zoning in the meeting two weeks from tonight.
Okay, we have a few people here in the audience. We do have three specific agenda items, but is there anybody here who would like to speak on anything that is not already on the agenda? Now would be the time to do that. Nobody? So I think with that, we would move into Agenda Item 1, the rethink zoning. Mr. Stahlheim.
All right. David Stahlheim, Long Range Planning Manager. So the first agenda item has to do with a follow-up from our presentation at the last meeting. So don't really have our presentation, but thought perhaps to help facilitate any discussion. We'd kind of walk through a few sequential things. First off, talking about the land use map amendments, then looking at the zoning map, and then looking at Chapter 5. And so we can stop and pause at each one of those if that works with the commission members. So up on the screen right now, I just have what was in your packet from the last meeting was Exhibit 1, just the land use map. And then you also have Exhibit 3, which were the 28 different amendments that we had identified as being land use changes. And when we presented that at the meeting, we kind of called attention to a few specific amendments. And this is a little bit small scale, but one of them was changing in the Northern Grand area from multifamily to single-family where the historic overlay is. And then two areas that are north and south of 41st, which currently are zoned for residential, but wherever Everett Clinic and a whole bunch of other office and clinic uses have gotten really well established in those areas and gone from the multifamily designation to a commercial designation in those areas. And so those are the ones that are more substantively that we saw as being bigger changes. But you have all the other packet in your Exhibit 3, different amendments, a lot of them very, very site-specific. And so I wanted to see if there's any comments on any of the land use plan changes.
Any comments? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. David, the neighborhood business zone, is that intended to pick up the various corner stores and bodegas throughout the different neighborhoods?
You know, it's, the way that we've done it right now is that it's intended to pick up right now in the new zoning. Those areas are currently already zoned for some kind of commercial use. We have one amendment in one area that was a corner store that happened to be right adjacent to a commercial zone, so we extended that. But there are quite a few other ones that are in residential areas that are non-conforming. And so we haven't gone in and done any of those, but what we're trying to do is write the criteria in such a way is that those could be rezones in the future to pick those up. And that could be a 2023 plan update to identify those and update that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
I'll just jump in. I guess I could follow up on the email I sent to staff earlier today. If this is an appropriate time to talk about naming conventions, would that be, would this be a good time to tackle that? Or do you want to?
Sir?
Yeah. No, I actually want to jump back more to the broader map of, and if you scroll up, you know, we're rethinking zoning right now. That is, we're kind of restructuring how we approach the city, how we approach zoning, and we're consolidating, condensing. And so one of the things I want to open up a discussion to and get commissioner feedback is, is actually how we structure the naming conventions, specifically around single-family. I don't know if that is generally the most accurate way to describe it. We have detached, we have detached accessory dwelling units, we have townhomes, we have, you know, it's not just your single-family detached home that we typically think of. And I think that it's an opportunity for us to have a more expansive definition, a more accurate definition of what land use options are in there. And I also think that, you know, given the historical problems with single-family land use, that, you know, it's important to take a stance around equity issues. Around 1917, there was a court case that explicitly outlawed racial segregation in housing and racially-based zoning that prohibited different races. The next year, you saw in land use planning, the introduction of single-family zones to circumnavigate that particular, particular Supreme Court decision. And so I think when we think about rethinking zoning, I also want to make sure that we're reframing the way we contextualize that and acknowledge that historical legacy of that land use and make sure that we're thinking about it without that particular baggage. And so I want to open that discussion to the commissioners.
Do you have suggestions as to alternatives?
Yeah, you know, I, I was just thinking neighborhood residential. It maintains the connotation of a more, of a more tranquil area, not multi, not huge high-rises, focusing on space for families and individuals. You know, kind of, again, it keeps in with the physical, physical elements of the zoning that we are condensing into single-family, but it also, again, steps away from that, that past, and it's more expansive. And so my initial stab would be neighborhood residential, because a neighborhood is a wonderful and tranquil thing that I think we should, and I think it really helps frame and, you know, frame the conversation in a positive way.
Question with that being, was there be a change for multifamily 2 that you think that would potentially be more descriptive or?
For me, what I, one of the driving elements for, you know, addressing the single-family was, yeah, you know, finding something that's a little more descriptive, but also to address that equity issue and kind of the historical legacy that is, comes with single-family, you know, acknowledging it, but also as we, going back to the concept of rethinking zoning and re-centering how we, how we think about that space and moving beyond that historical legacy and doing that brand-new, fresh start. I mean, last time we were here, we definitely talked about naming conventions in our, in the zoning to kind of add to a kind of historic catalog of, you know, when things, you know, what, what things were before and what things were after. I remember David mentioning that. And I think this is an opportunity, since we're doing such a large rezone and a rethink, this is an opportunity for us to really kind of, kind of put that bright line in, like this is before and this is after as well. So kind of us rethinking the, reframing how we look at it, reframing, addressing that historic, you know, acknowledging the challenging history it has, but also looking forward to a better future and a brighter opportunity to how, and how we frame approaching these problems.
Staff, go ahead.
Yeah, Alan Giffen, Planning Director. First, I want to thank Commissioner Lark for bringing up the idea of looking at a different name than, than single-family, because there are different housing types that we are talking about, not introducing, but actually allowing a little bit more liberally through the rethink zoning process. I will point out that the Supreme Court case had nothing to do with Everett. We didn't have zoning until, permanent zoning until 1956. And I think the name that we have was really kind of just the standard naming convention that was used across the country in neighborhoods that were primarily single-family and were predominantly single-family detached houses. But the housing types have changed a bit, so might think about something just describing really the intent for, as it pertains to density. So for example, we could talk about medium density in what are now designated as single-family on that map. And in the multifamily areas, we could perhaps use a different descriptor of higher density or something along those lines. But I think that's, in the past, when we had so many different, the map that we had in effect prior to last year, we had, I think, eight different residential designations that went from, talk about specific density ranges, and so there were so many of them we needed to simplify it. But I think that still the implication, you know, look at those different colors on the map would be, you look at the darker color, it's going to be higher density. The lighter color is going to be lower in density, no matter what we call it. So I think that maybe that would be another way to look at it, is just tied to the anticipated density.
If I may, I, I'm fine with a friendly amendment like that, but, you know, one of the things I did, you know, I don't want, I didn't mean to imply that Everett was part of that Supreme Court case. It was, it was, it was not Everett. But, you know, we do have to, I think it is important to be thoughtful that as we adopt naming conventions, as we adopt the status quo or adopt best, you know, the practices of the time, that, you know, the practice of the time at that point, you know, that we adopted from had a intent, intent and explicit, you know, racial bias built into it and intent. So I think as we move beyond, as we start looking at the future for Everett's, you know, Everett, you know, name other than single-family, I think is appropriate. And again, going back to a name, as Alan mentioned, that, you know, talks more about the capacity of what can be there. And so, you know, I'm not married to neighbor, neighborhood residential, I just think it sounds quite pleasant, but I'm opening up to the commission for feedback and thoughts. But the intents, the two intents that I have, you know, for more, for more accuracy and also moving beyond that particular legacy, those are two of the driving factors for, you know, what I'm, why I'm bringing this up.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yeah, my only question on that is, the term, single-family and multifamily are in wide use. They're kind of generally understood well by the market, by lenders, whereas this, a new term like that would be, might introduce some confusion among the housing community, if you will, including residents and buyers.
Commissioner Finch?
That was one of my points, and the other point was that, consistent with Director Giffen, I think that the nomenclature we use need to be, needs to be descriptive of the uses. And so if we can make it as objective as possible and consistent with the market, I think that's what we as planning commissioners should be thinking about.
I guess I'll comment. I was thinking somewhat along those lines, there, there are some, just kind of in the, in the business ways things get referred to. What was occurring to me is, I was thinking back to the discussion we had about affordable housing, which isn't really a term that I like, but that discussion, and I was curious, maybe this is kind of a question too to, to David. My understanding is that with the whole of the rethink zoning thing, we're not really changing any designations, we're fixing a few things and consolidating, but current single-family areas will stay sing, generally stay single-family versus multifamily, generally multifamily. And I guess this also was, Commissioner Tisdale raised it last meeting, I think, too, about how this fits in with Vision 2050, which we'll talk about later, you know, increasing density. Is there anything, I guess, is there anything in this rethinking, in the rethink zoning that we're doing here that, or any consideration about the idea of both doing something while we're doing this to increase, build the capacity, and specifically with regard to what's currently single-family? My understanding is that there is some effort to try to redefine and maybe add some additional housing types, and to basically add some capacity in single-family. And so I guess maybe in some ways, what I'm saying is, the way the descriptor of single-family seems to indicate, you know, just one house and one family. And so I guess I would agree that it's not necessarily descriptive of what's really going on out there, because a lot of times there's multiple families living in one residence. And we also are kind of, I think, at a point where, at least in maybe the next few years with, you know, the housing crisis that's going on, you know, adding other options for that. So is single-family necessarily the, the way to describe it? I don't know. But I guess the question I had kind of too was, is there any thought about that idea of adding, some, doing something to add some density, or does this, what we're doing here have any impact on, on that or any, let's say, overlap with the affordable housing discussions that are going on and that sort of, sort of direction that things are, things are happening?
Yeah, the, when we get to the Chapter 5 in the zoning code, we, we definitely have some more housing types, and they're not all just single-family. We have some townhouses, duplexes, and some potential for, you know, three to four units in some of these areas that are on this map designated as single-family. And I think that's what Commissioner Lark is a little bit getting at too, is it's not just a single house, a single detached, I mean, we have accessory dwelling units. So we're not, we're not getting, so we're adding a little bit more capacity, a little bit more density, but we're not adding it to the degree of the numbers that Alan will cover a little bit later type of thing. So it's just adding a little bit more options within some of these neighborhoods.
In response to the Vision 2050 and the growth numbers, that'll be a separate process. And at this point, we don't know what numbers we will be planning for. That is a process that I'll talk about a little bit more in a later Agenda Item.
Commissioner Lark?
If I may, again, not particularly related to neighborhood residential, and I think the points brought up by Commissioner Finch, Commissioner Zelinski, for clarity, make a lot of sense. So even though it's what we can, you know, do to move away from the previous term and be clear, clear in its intent, I'm all in support of that as well.
Yes, I was going to say I would support that idea to describe the buildings and the density in an objective way without talking about the people that are living in those structures.
Well, it also appears that the planning staff is recommending adopting Urban Residential 1 and Urban Residential 2. And so I think that also, it does move the nomenclature needle a little bit, but is still descriptive largely of what we're talking about. The fact that there are single-family uses within those zones, I mean, that, that is a component of the land use pattern of our city, so that is, you know, perfectly, you know, expected, I would say.
Anyone else?
I, my concern would be the banks, the lending institutions, and what they recognize as a single-family and a townhouse, there's different down, you know, that the contractor has to go through, there's different rules and regulations for the lending side. So I'm not opposed to something, but, you know, it's currently working. And when you go on the internet, you look, you know, you look for an SFR, you look for, so it could, that, that would be my concern, is I think it would cause, even the insurance industry, you insure your house as a single-family residence or a duplex or a fourplex. So I, I, I think we need to check with those folks before we go too far.
Last I checked, they weren't checking with us about how we classified housing into how they write their insurance policies. I don't think they pay much attention. I don't think it's that important that we need to really see what the bankers and lenders do when we're setting our land use regulations, and it's different in every community, the zoning from one town to the next are, it's, yeah, I just don't think that's really a big concern.
Let's go to Polygon in Silver Lake, a few years ago, right there on the corner, that big one, when that got rezoned, is that? Yeah. And part of that rezone and the names of those rezones are what helped secure financing and things like that, because there were options available there that there weren't for other specific, you know, single-family residences or those. I know it's different than the, but it's just, that's my piece.
Yeah, okay. I just don't think it really makes difference what we call the zone. The bankers will have to look at the rules within the zones if they, when they're trying to figure out whether you're owning the land and the unit and so forth, so that's probably enough.
If I may, open up a question then. Just, you know, what would be, is there, is there interest in having medium density be the nomenclature we use? Do we feel that is clear and understandable and something that, you know, someone looking at, you know, this map would be able to interpret and be useful? Do I get that sentiment from the commission?
Not for me, but I'm just one guy, you know, confusion.
I think that the naming scheme proposed as Urban Residential 1 through 4, I find clear and, and acceptable. I don't see any reason to deviate from that.
Well, I mean, I'm not devi, if I may, I don't, my intent isn't to deviate through Urban Residential 1 through 4. That's my understanding of the zoning, but I'm talking about just a land use designation, which is like, as opposed to single-family, multifamily, which is a little less granular than what Urban Residential is. At least that's my, it's my understanding. Please, somebody sharpshoot me if I'm wrong.
May I suggest that we can bring something back for future discussion?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner McGinn?
If I can ask a different kind of question. My, my only reservation really on looking at the map, and I, I do appreciate the simplification of our zoning. I think that will streamline the process of, of developing, and it does, it does, it's very approachable. I worried about our parks being included in a general local resource land category with other types of public resources. I wondered if that would allow those parcels to later be used for other uses? If it was part of the same zoning, if a park could later just pretty easily become something else that was less accessible to the public? So that was, that was my biggest reservation on looking at the map.
The, the pattern that we did for the land use destinations, we, we set this up last year, and we did have a separate designation for parks. And, and then the same thing when we started looking at the zoning map, we don't have a separate zoning designation for it, as, as you're, as you're seeing. So one of the, one of the drawbacks of having both a plan designation and a zoning designation is that if you want to expand a park, or you have a new park, like up in Glacier View, you have to actually wait a year to amend the comprehensive plan and amend the zoning code in order to establish that, that the zoning in place. So the flexibility is, is not there whatsoever. And so we found a way when we did Metro Everett, when we took out the parks zoning out of that, where we have that as a use within the table, and it's subject to approval of the city council. Does it have some risks in terms of conversion? Yeah, because whatever the underlying zoning is of that park, all those other uses would be eligible within there. But it's city property, subject to Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, and I would imagine that if the, the city council was considering a change in the parks, that this room would be probably overflowing. So it wouldn't be done in a vacuum at all as part of that. So, so I think there's a risk there, yeah. But I, I, I mean, from my perspective, I think that risk is minimal.
Okay.
Any more questions?
So again, just, just kind of a, just to check in on the land use stuff, so other than the names, we, we did have 28 different locations identified. I do want to kind of call out one thing where Commissioner Finch and I were talking on the phone the other day about one area that's down near where the potential future light rail station at Evergreen and 526. And we have some of the school properties, Cascade High School and Evergreen Middle School are both zoned for a single-family. And, and I think one of his, you know, as you, let me see if I can get a bigger map here. As you look at, I don't get that. Alan's got to keep me grounded in Everett here. As you look at, so one, so right now, you know, light rail is, you know, has a target somewhere here at the intersection. We don't know exactly where, where it'll end up, but this is the preliminary alignment from Sound Transit is located somewhere around here. And so one of the things that was jumping out, I think, to Commissioner Finch, was how narrow the commercial strip was here in this area, but this is Cascade and this is Evergreen. So his question was, what is the impact of, of, of the single-family zoning on that? And, and, you know, one of the impacts is, is actually when we did the heights, when we had height transition issue. And so we have potentially only three floors of heights here, but we also then require that to transition for a certain distance here. So the backsides of these properties, you know, in essence, like this, these properties here may only under the height regulations be able to get to three floors as a result of that, where light rail is coming in here. So, so I think it was an interesting observation that we didn't think about the impact, and, you know, and this might be an area where we might want to think about another land use change to change the schools to multifamily and give them a little bit taller thing that, that allows then, you know, basically a little bit more development capacity where light rail could be in the future. It could also be something that's in the 2023 plan update as well. Could be done at that point. At that point, we'll know a little bit more where light rail is coming in at that, at that point as well, kind of thing. But just kind of keep in mind a little bit of these conversations that kind of traditionally a lot of the schools, particularly when they're adjacent to single-family neighborhoods, I think they've been zoned, designated for single-family or neighborhood residential or whatever term that we come up with.
David, to that point, would there then, if you changed the zone there, then would that have the impact on the neighboring residential zones?
Not really. I mean, it could have impact in that the school could potentially build something taller on that property, so you, you want to consider that in terms of when we look at the heights and stuff on that piece of property, make sure that that fits. But I don't think it would have any other thing, other than you would look at the uses that might be allowed in a multifamily and, and, you know, kind of like the same question about parks is, you know, what are the ramifications if we designate that multifamily? And then the schools want to do something different on that property, that would potentially be there. But there is some impact to, on heights, particularly in these areas that, particularly where you have a narrow piece of property in here, and that's one of the reasons when we did some of the height changes that we, you know, dealt with a little bit of that at the same time. But I don't think it would have any other thing, other than you would look at the uses that might be allowed in a multifamily and, and, you know, kind of like the same question about parks is, you know, what are the ramifications if we designate that multifamily, and then the schools want to do something different on that property? That would potentially be there. But there is some impact to, on heights, particularly in, in these areas that, particularly where you have a narrow piece of property in here. And that's one of the reasons when we did some of the height changes that we, you know, dealt with a little bit of that at the same time. So if no other changes on the land use, I would jump to the zoning map. And just wanted to, in the memo that we sent to you, it was dated the 15th, just kind of walking through the different zoning districts. We had, so in the land use designation that was currently called residential single-family, we have two zoning districts, the UR1 and the UR2. It's going down from five. Residential multifamily, two zoning districts down from five. Metropolitan Center, three, just like its current zoning. Commercial mixed use, three. Commercial designations down from, I think it's 10 or 11 or something? A lot. And industrial zones, three, down from five. And then local resource lands, largely three agriculture, excuse me, two agriculture water resource management, but, but also any other designation could also be on these properties. So we wrote criteria for these designations, which would go into the comprehensive plan. But the end result is a zoning map that we have provided to folks, and they have a larger scale or printout here. So I don't know if people have had a chance to look at any of this stuff and have any questions as to either the designation criteria or the boundaries that we end up choosing on any of these.
Commissioner Finch?
I had no question on the boundaries. As far as the designation criteria, are you speaking about Exhibit 7?
I think it's Exhibit 8, actually.
Ah, got it. Okay.
Yeah.
Similar. One has pictures, one does not.
Yeah. It goes into the comprehensive plan.
So I, I do have a question as it relates to urban residential one. And just in general, the, the new housing types, bullet point, single-family attached. How does a single-family attached in an urban residential one zone differ from a duplex?
Kind of one of our fun internal discussions that we have as well. And I think that as we kind of walk through this in the next couple of months, that we may see ways to merge that. But one of the easiest ways to answer that is actually a duplex can be what other people call is a flat that can be stacked. And whereas a single-family attached is a townhome that they're attached on the sides, type of thing.
Yeah. And I, I understand the, the difference in the definition, but from a, from a, and that's more of a design issue rather than a use issue.
It's more of a design issue, correct.
And so relative to uses, it may simplify the code to stick to one or the other, probably a duplex, since it's all encompassing, as opposed to having both in there.
Potentially, yeah.
So something to think about.
Yeah. Yeah, no, internally, we're struggling with that a little bit. And I think, kind of want to give it a little bit more distance. So in March, we're going to talk about the residential standards, and then we'll have some more input from the public and see where we end up with these things and see how that ends up. And if they end up making sense to merge, then merge them. But there might be some distinctions that we still want to have.
Okay. And then also, how does cottage housing fit into urban residential one?
So cottage housing, so it would be small houses. And so this would largely be what I would typically call a planned development. So someone with a larger piece of property to assemble that could build multiple cottages on that. And we, the, what Dave Tyler brought to you last meeting was some changes in the land division code for unit lots and divisions, and some other things that would allow for a little bit more flexibility of how the land is divided in those circumstances.
Yeah. I mean, it strikes me that that's an effective housing type and a different flavor offering for, for Everett, which I think is great. I just question whether or not it makes sense in the context of urban residential one. Because I think the notion behind urban residential one is it's a lower-density classification. And if we're putting multiple homes on a larger piece of property, we are then, sounds like, talking more about urban residential two.
Yeah. Again, these will be some of the things that we'll have in the development standards that will come back in March. But we really want to get a little bit more input from the public before we bring that to you. But some of the conversation is to set some density limits for that. So it, it isn't strikingly different than what you would get out of a traditional subdivision. So there would be some density limits in the cottage housing provisions, so.
Okay.
I think the thing that makes the cottage housing appropriate in that, in that urban one is just the scale of it, because they are so petite. It's, it feels contextually appropriate when you see it, like, within the fabric of a neighborhood, because you're not getting the height, you're not getting the massing. And usually, the way that these parcels are designed, it's such that you really, you really can't fit a lot of density on the, on the lot. That makes sense?
It does make sense. I guess I, I would come back to, so if, if cottage housing is, is permissible in urban residential one, and again, there, there's obviously lot coverage issues that would need to be maintained. But it, it seems unfair to limit townhouses to two units, right? Because we're still talking about similar scale of density. So again, I feel like that's more appropriate in UR2 as opposed to UR1, which in my mind is a, it's a, it's some of a, somewhat of a unique zoning classification based on historical development patterns here in Everett.
I think the difference that I find with the cottage housing as opposed to a townhouse is because the units are, they read visually as a single unit, the massing appears to be much larger. As with the cottage housing, you know, you, you're maybe getting an eight or 900 square foot unit, two or three of them, you know, in a, in a small lot. It's, I, I think because they are separate units and, and they don't read as a whole, the townhouse has a more dense feeling within the neighborhood. But I, that's, that's my read on it anyway.
But as Commissioner Holland has said several times, I look forward to seeing the design standards.
As you.
Can we make him a shirt that says that, please?
Well, again, asking these questions and, and concerns are, are great input for us helping to draft those standards and stuff, so.
Commissioner Zlansky?
David, could you explain the transit overlay for us?
Sure. So the way that the transit overlay is right now, and so it zoomed into one area, it has two different effects, in essence. One, one effect is that in the heights maps, when we did heights, that there's another half floor in the single-family zone, so the UR2 zones. Rather than just two and a half floors, we went up to three floors in those areas. And so that's one of the effects. The second is that when we look at the use tables, you'll see some footnotes in the UR2 where it would allow a few other housing types when it's within the transit overlay as part of that. The transit overlay that we've drawn is along what we consider the frequent transit corridors. So we've used Route 7 for Everett Transit, SWIFT. And then we did, quarter mile was our, our rough distance. And then we did a half mile from Future Light Rail stations as a result of that. In some areas, like where I'm zoomed in right here, you can see that some of this is, is well less than a quarter mile, because what we did is we zoomed in and looked at the sidewalk network, and we found a lack of sidewalk network in some of those areas. And so we felt that it was not appropriate to have that transit overlay to draw any further. So we may have something that's in the comprehensive plan that's a wider boundary. And so it would encourage those sidewalks to be developed within those areas, but that, for the regulatory side of things, it would be narrow. We did have a question from one council member about it, as particularly as we get to the south end around 526 and Evergreen, because when we did this half mile, you could see, and then we kind of pulled everything, because there was a, we pulled all this, this neighborhood between Everett Mall into it. And what we didn't do with the, with the Future Light Rail stations, we didn't look at that sidewalk network. And so there's a lot of areas within here without sidewalks. And I have too many things open right now to now find where it all is. But I have actually, we started looking at some of that, that area. And so I think this is something that we want to revisit, particularly around the Future Light Rail stations, is to perhaps narrow that down from a regulatory perspective before we put this forward into a final draft.
Thank you. Commissioner Lahr?
If I may just add a thought, the comment that David made about expanding it to a quarter mile to kind of prioritize where sidewalk development should be, I really like that. And I, I think that before we kind of want to hone in and, and close down, like, what could be in a transit overlay, we want to be as expansive as possible to drive that sidewalk development and prioritization. You know, I think as much as we can, we should be gearing our city towards transit-oriented development as much as possible. And, you know, just on a sidewalk, a side note, having walked just about every street in Everett, I feel very, like, it's, sidewalks or not, that entire area is extremely pleasant to walk through between, in those interior neighborhoods. So just, it's just an aesthetics note. But my follow-up question, though, is we did adjust the boundaries for transit of, for transit overlays, you know, based off of some, you know, what we see on the map. And so I, I notice up further north, around 24th, right below the Grand Historic Overlay, we have, you know, multifamily, we have multifamily zones that aren't included in that transit overlay. And I want to open up the question of whether or not it makes sense to extend that transit overlay to a multifamily UR4, which is, already seems to be in conforming with the, the intent of what a transit overlay area should look like. And it's already multifamily. I just want to open that up for discussion.
There's not a whole lot of practical effect, though, of putting multifamily in the transit overlay, because the density is already permitted. The difference in the UR2 zone is that it would allow for some housing types that would not be allowed outside of that transit overlay, that are higher in density than your standard, the single-family zone. Those housing types are already allowed in the UR4 zone, and they're not really within that quarter-mile walk shed of the frequent transit corridor. So we had similar conversation about that. And the, really just, the answer was, it didn't make any difference whether it was in or out, based on the regulations that we drafted thus far.
And so there's no height, additional height bonuses for being under, in transit overlays as well for the UR4?
No, there's not. It was just in the UR2 zone where we had another half floor. We, we do have some height bonuses. Actually, that, that is a good point, is that we do have some height bonuses that we've done along some of the other quarters, so along Broadway. Along Broadway, going up here, four to six floors, but then also down as we go along Evergreen Way, where we have five to seven, or seven to nine floors within these areas. And so we kind of use a little bit of the same pattern of using these areas, including Casino Road. And so we, we roughly used the transit overlay as a way of, of looking at the height incentives in those areas, but there's no direct relationship with that.
My, my last question. Would it be possible for us to get a map of the transit overlay just with the quarter-mile radius and not indexed to sidewalks, so we can see kind of what that is? I mean, not, maybe for, as the, as the conversation goes forward?
Sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner LaRra?
This is a question that I have been wondering about for a while off and on. I'm curious what the rationale is for saying that in all the urban residential zones that the lot width is 50 feet, when, you know, probably half of the lots in North and Central Everett are less than 50 feet wide, and we're talking about wanting more density. So I'm just kind of trying to understand the rationale for that.
So, yeah, it's a good, good point. So a little bit, some of the standards, I mean, even when we look at the development standards about lot sizes, sometimes our, our lot sizes, our, our traditional fallback are going to be larger than what an product might be. And part of the, the rationale behind that is to make sure that we don't segregate parcels in advance of getting that development and that density. And so sometimes even like the 50-foot wide lots, whereas is, we don't want people to narrow the lots down, because then consolidation or building attached homes becomes more difficult as a result. So as we look at the development standards for, for townhouses, attached townhouses, we wouldn't have necessarily 50-foot wide lots. They could do, they could do, let's say they have a lot and a half, and we're going to be working with our consultant on some prototypes, I think. So we're looking at like, maybe a 75-foot wide lot where they can do some attached townhomes within that, where they can narrow those lots, you know, under 50 feet, and, you know, have maybe 25-foot wide lots that are for that townhome itself, kind of thing. So.
That had occurred to me, but I just was curious about it, because it does make many, many lots non-conforming according to this.
The traditional pattern, I think, for a lot, a lot of lots, though, is 50 feet. There's, there's quite a bit of inventory in that area.
A lot of them were planted in 25-foot widths, but were owned and consolidated to, or houses built over to the 25-foot wide lots, although certainly not exclusively. And it's easy to see when you're traveling down one of the streets in North Everett where the lot patterns might be a little smaller.
I think one of the prototypes we will be asking the consultants to look at is some infill potential on some of those narrower lots at 37 and a half feet. So I think that's one of the ones that we're going to ask them to do some design stuff on.
Thank you.
All right. So anything else on zoning maps itself?
I just want to say thank you for entertaining all the questions I had.
Thank you for having questions.
I'm helping.
All right. So the next thing then is, is actually the Chapter 5 and the use tables. And I'm sure you've all read them in great detail. So some have. So what we've done is gone through the residential, and we, we separated these different uses. Again, we reduced, kind of used the Metro Everett use tables as the template for most of this. We've added more uses, because as we scaled up citywide, some of the auto-oriented uses weren't really there in Metro Everett, and some of our land use staff really wanted to have a little bit better clarity on some of the auto-oriented uses. So as you look at the table, so we have the zones going across the top. C means conditional use permit, which means a public hearing in front of the hearing examiner. P means permitted. You just get your, your development permits, meet the requirements of the zoning code. A means administrative. That means notice the neighbor's inability to condition it. In some places, we'll have footnotes, that have footnotes that either have some additional requirements in that zone. And we also have some specific standards for some of these that will be coming out, either in Chapter 8 that we'll have before you in, in March as part of the development standards, or in Chapter 13 that we're going to talk about in a little bit here. So with that, I don't know if anyone has any of these uses that are flagged, definitions, or things that, permission levels, things like that. Be glad to answer any questions or...
Commissioner Finch?
I have probably a couple dozen. So I don't want to bore you with these here. But what's the most effective way to provide my comments, so it doesn't log this meeting down? Email?
Email would be good. So we've got a record of them, and we can pass those on to the rest of the commission.
Great. In general, I think it's a very, very solid start. Many of my questions just relate to my ag- Many of my questions just relate to my ignorance with the base code, but I think that we can work through them together.
Okay. Are there any that need any more planning commission discussion?
Well, I think, the one that jumps out at me that may be worth discussing is, on page two, this has to do with street type designations, and there's a provision for corner lots. If there are two different designations, the most stringent applies 100 feet in on the other side. And I guess the question I had is, what's the magic behind the 100-foot depth? And is that a, it strikes me that's not market-driven. It strikes me that it's difficult enough to get viable, non-residential uses at the street level at present in a new development. And that's true in many locations in more dense cities. And so, as we're thinking about trying to inspire new developments, new higher-density developments coming in, to make the more stringent requirement, turn the corner for 100 feet, seems like we're not helping ourselves out. So, that was my comment.
Yeah, and so the street designations, the number of places where we have this is probably pretty limited. So, the purple on this map, and it's one of the things that we did get to you for your last meeting, but you should have in the DIAAS a street designation map here tonight. So, apologize for not getting you a hard copy before, but it's everywhere there's a purple, and everywhere there's a corner with purple and another color, that's where that would apply. And I, I don't know that there's a lot of places, I know that there's one right down in Everett Station, right, as I'm circling the map right here, that's there, but there's only a few locations. But you're right, it's not market-driven, it's a number that we came up with, and no one asked any questions at the time, so I'm glad to...
Until now.
Yeah.
The other question I had that may be worth discussion is use of basements in the mixed urban zone. I think it's a great idea to activate space that is otherwise challenging to use, and I think that flexibility, so long as it's consistent with the approved uses at street level, make a lot of sense. The question I had for the staff was, does it make sense to come out and just explicitly prohibit certain uses that are obviously not compatible with street level? Because otherwise, I can see inviting a lot of inquiry, and so it may just make your lives easier to say, certain uses are just not allowed, period.
Yeah, that, and then, we had a code up until very recently in Metro, where we had that kind of list of prohibited uses. So, there were certain things that were prohibited, like on parts of Hewitt, tattoo parlors, teen clubs, had a whole laundry list of things that, at one time or another, were not popular with our council members, and a lot of them just seemed to go away. There's not really a market for a number of those uses, but you end up writing a lengthy code, trying to list everything that you don't want sometimes.
Sure.
It might be better to list those things that you want to encourage and make the review process simpler.
So long as we can tie it to your retirement calendar, I think I'm fine with that.
Hopefully not mine.
I just wanted to say, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Finch on the critique regarding corner lots. It makes, it's a really valid question he brings up, and I don't see the reason for the 100 feet either. So, that's just one to weigh in on that one.
Okay. You know, we have time before we get to the final draft, so I really would encourage commissioners to spend some time, just, this is really kind of the map, and these uses are really the big foundation of the zoning code. And so, as you walk through it and you see a definition, if you don't understand what it means, that's probably a problem. So, here are kind of our citizen readers here, and I think that it should be to a point where the citizens can understand when they look at the definition. So I would encourage you. And the same thing, a little bit about, you know, the, how the uses are permitted in different areas, type of thing, again, of what should require notice, and if there's anything that you want to flag and kind of thing, please, please send us comments.
David, question, there's so much information here, does it make sense to try to focus on certain kinds of uses at different meetings going forward, so we don't have to touch upon residential, commercial, and industrial all in the same meeting? It might provide other commissioners the ability to dig deeper.
Yeah, that might, that might be a good idea, and maybe we'll come back with the residential use tables with the residential standards, and we could deal with that together right now.
That sounds great.
I like it.
Good idea.
How many copies is that?
All right, well, with that, I think we've made it through the first item on the agenda, unless there's something else, and we can move on to the next item on the agenda.
Anyone else? Do we open up for any public comments? I haven't received any notice that anybody had signed up to talk about Agenda Item One. Do we have somebody? Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Harris. 3017 Lombard in beautiful downtown Everett. The thing that struck me with all of this, this question of transit and transportation overlay. And I get a sense that in the near future, things are going to change, things are going to change drastically. I know, is this even the right thing to be focusing on with the upcoming changes? And you can look at your own crystal balls and figure out what that means, but it's just, if we're talking bus systems, I see routes changing to neighborhood patterns rather than trunk lines. Well, maybe it's all trunk lines, and what we've seen here, such as Evergreen and Broadway, that this is appropriate. But other things, cars, are we going to keep our cars, are we going to move away to cars? What our possessiveness is on some of that? I just, just wonder if transit and transportation overlays are the right, right thing, right manner to focus on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I guess we move on to Agenda Item Number Two. Thank you.
Okay, so, this is one chapter that we've drafted, Chapter 13, called Specific Use Standards. And what it is, is right now, there's what we've put into this chapter, actually come from three different chapters in the clean code, out of either Chapter Five, Uses and Table Footnotes, or Chapter 39, or Chapter 41. And so, the idea is to look at, put all those things into one chapter. So some of the key changes in this from the current, for marijuana, all we're doing right now is updating the references to the new zones, so no other changes have we done in here. But at the same time, Alan's going to be briefing City Council, I think, later this month?
Next week, yeah.
Next week, on some issues that the council wanted to look at, like the number of locations, but there might be some other standards there. And so, depending on what the council does, we would fold those into, into it. We didn't have any standards for aggregate extraction, the draft of Chapter Five uses don't permit that, so we didn't put any standards in there. And the current standards for homeless encampments were edited to include safe parking areas in tiny home communities, and did some reorganization of that section to provide some clarity. Alan already mentioned on supportive housing, that was repealed by City Council, and so that section is not in there. There is a provision in the adult-use business section of the code about amortization, but there are no adult-use businesses in the city, so we took that amortization clause out. And one of the standards that we had in, for alcohol production and coffee roasting is because some of that has some odors attached to it, and so rather than put that in the use table, we decided, meeting the clean Puget Sound Clean Air Agency, got that right. So really, and then, in your summary, just kind of identified all these uses that we have, everything from accessory uses, marijuana, jails, correctional, utilities, airfields, aggregates, antennas, building apprentices, schools, churches, hospitals, community centers, secure community treatment facility, adaptive reuse of non-residential buildings, hazardous waste treatment, temporary uses, group housing, supportive housing, adult retail business, adult-use business, live-work units, light automobile and truck service, alcohol production, coffee roasters, and many casinos. And so, as you can see, all those provisions are what our existing code is, and where found, where it's in the new code, but then where it's found in the existing code is there. And the only thing that's really new standard is the alcohol production and coffee roasters. So with that, I, if there's any questions or comments?
Just a question on the adult-use business. You say there are no, currently, there are no such uses in the city. Are they precluded from locating here in the future?
No.
Then I think you might want to retain the amortization provision.
Well, the amortization is only for those that are located in an area that, where they would not be permitted, and...
Oh, I see.
So, yeah, the amortization. There was, when we had a couple of adult-use businesses and were establishing the regulations, turned out the ones that were in the city were located in areas that were too close to certain sensitive land uses, and so there was an amortization clause within the regulations. And now that they're gone, one can be established somewhere in the city if it meets all of the separation requirements, and if it does, then there's no need for amortization.
Amortization, okay. Thank you.
Just jump to the use table, so we have them identified in the business zone and in our industrial zones.
Commissioner Lark, did you want to rename this section, the Greatest Hits of Planning?
I would absolutely enjoy that.
I had a few questions, and they were fairly specific, so I've talked to David about them, and I will email you those questions as well, so you have them.
Any questions? Is that everything?
That's it.
Okay. So...
I don't have any notes, people want to comment on this? You can't open a public one, you just say you think, say nothing, want to our 2015 update?
Thank you. Alan Giffen, planning director, and I did provide a memo in your packet, and I won't be touching on that very much. I'm going to talk a little bit more about growth numbers. I think those are the things that, one of the things that people get excited about when it comes to updating a comp plan or a regional plan, and extending the planning horizon out, with that comes more growth. And that's what I'm going to focus on with my PowerPoint tonight, so, let's see. Let me try this. So, the Puget Sound Regional Council is in the process of updating the Vision 2040 Regional Growth Strategy. It'll be adopted in May of this year, and they're extending the horizon out 10 years, so it'll be called Vision 2050, coincidentally. And what the, what the Vision 2040 and 2050 Growth Strategy contains are what they, the Regional Council refers to as guidance and not targets. The guidance is provided to the counties and the cities, because under the Growth Management Act, the growth targets are established in countywide planning policies. But in, at least in practice, the numbers adopted in our countywide planning policies, at least for Everett, were identical to the guidance that was provided in Vision 2040 by the Regional Council. And so, my hunch is that we're going to be looking at some specific numbers here, and those are going to, I think, generate a little bit more discussion, I think, between the city and the county and its neighboring cities as we go through this. But one of the things that the multi-county planning policies that are contained in the vision document require is that each county then adopt an update to countywide planning policies. It's kind of a framework, so that everybody's using a consistent basis across the four-county region, all the cities and the counties, for implementing the regional growth strategy. And so, we're going to start that process pretty soon here in Snohomish County, with our fellow cities and the county, and updating a lot of the current countywide planning policies, because quite a few changes in the Vision 2050 document. It does change what are referred to as regional geographies. And so in Vision 2040, that Everett is a metropolitan city or metropolitan center, there are a number of different classifications, like Lynwood and Bothell were considered core cities. There's a category for larger cities and smaller cities, and unincorporated urban growth areas and rural areas. And a lot of those are still the same, but the one thing that's really changed with Vision 2050 is that the, a number of the cities that were either classified as small or large cities have now been classified as high-capacity transit communities, because they are going to be served by light rail or swift bus rapid transit services in Snohomish County and in the other counties, their version of bus rapid transit. And so, while they kept Lynwood and Bothell as core cities, and Everett as a metropolitan city, cities like Mount Lake Terrace, Edmonds, Muckelteo, Marysville, Arlington, Mill Creek, all served by either swift bus rapid transit or light rail, are now considered high-capacity transit communities. And so, that's, that's the main change in these regional geographies. But within that system of regional geographies, Everett is still a metropolitan city and will still be a priority, priority location for growth in Snohomish County. So, let's see, make sure I'm not skipping too far ahead. So, the numbers that are being used in Vision 2050 is a, and I'm not going to talk too much about, or any, really about the employment targets, it's really the population that is a bit more challenging at this point. The target for 2050 for Everett, without any changes in our current city boundaries, would be 197,000. And if you look at the bottom line there, our population as of last April was just under 112,000, so a gain of about 85,000 over current population. And the second line there, we have, the second and the third line, we've got adopted targets in our comp plan, two different adopted targets in our comprehensive plan. And we did something that I didn't, I don't think any other city has done, and we established a conditional target that's identical to what Vision 2040 and the countywide planning policies set as Everett's target for 2035, a population of 165,000. We also have a default target that I'll talk about a little bit more. set as Everett's target for 2035, a population of 165,000. We also have a default target that I'll talk about a little bit more. And the reason that we called the 165,000 a conditional target, because we said there are a lot of conditions that have to really align in pretty much perfect alignment for this number to be realistic. And this was adopted in 2015, a year before the Sound Transit vote on Sound Transit III, so we did not know if or when voters would pass Sound Transit III and when light rail might get to Everett. And so, in our current plan, we say that the light rail really needs to be to Everett about five years ahead of 2035 in order for us to allow the market to respond to that infrastructure investment and the high densities that it should be supportive of. And the light rail alignment and station locations must be situated in the right locations to really optimize our ability to accommodate growth, and that the regional economy must support high-rise construction because, you know, just based on the type of construction that's viable in 2015 and still pretty much the same today, we wouldn't see high-rise construction, but that's where some of our growth capacity was estimated or projected to be in the 2015 plan. A couple of more assumptions here, that the growth capacity in other parts of the county really affect our ability to grow in Everett. And so, to the extent that other places within Snohomish County were easier to develop, the markets would tend to follow the path of least resistance rather than the more challenging task of redevelopment where you have to buy buildings and then tear them down before you can start over again. And so, we're pretty much out of vacant land, and most of our growth in the future will be redevelopment. And then, we said that if all of these things aligned, then we might hit that 165,000 by 2035. But if not, our default target would be about 22,000 less. And so, as it turns out, none of those things have really occurred the way that they needed to in order for that 165,000 to be realistic. SC3 is approved, but won't get here until the year after 2035, and that's before we know whether or not the initiative has any impact on that arrival date. The exact light rail alignment and station locations are not known yet. We think we know where they'll be, but there's a process that has to be followed before we know if they will be where we think they should be. At least in our metro plan, we think we know where it should go. The regional economy has obviously been strong since coming out of the recession, but high-rise construction is not yet viable in Everett. You know, we're still looking at the model of five-story wood frame construction over concrete is the viable model today, but that's not to say that a couple of things could change. You know, the use of cross-laminated timber and building code changes may allow for greater building height. Or heck, Lynwood's got an application in for an 18-story building in Lynwood, and it's not even that close to the light rail station that's proposed. So, that's not far away from us, and it's not far away from the light rail getting to Lynwood, so, you know, that whole thing could change as we get closer to the arrival of light rail in Everett. So, maybe at some point, high-rise construction and much greater growth capacity that could accommodate will occur here in Everett. The Everett share of the countywide population growth, at least in the countywide planning policies, was for the growth out to 2035 to be, more than 25% of that would be in Everett. But in actuality, at least since 2010, coming out of the recession, the share of growth that's gone to Everett is about a third of that. And so, we are not meeting those regional expectations. Since 2010, the county has grown by over 100,000, 105,000. Everett's only grown by about 8,700. And so, if you look at the growth rates there, countywide, that nine-year rate is an increase of almost 15%. Everett's is the lowest among those categories there. All other cities were at about 11%. Unincorporated Snohomish County grew at almost 21%, and that's where the growth capacity was in the 2015 comp plans, and that's where a lot of the growth since 2010 has occurred. And so, again, that path of least resistance where you had more land, less obstacles for redevelopment, and so that's where a great, a much greater proportion of the growth has gone is in the unincorporated areas. That will all be different probably with our next plan update because a lot of the unincorporated areas are now getting built out, and so Everett won't be the only city or urban area that's faced with most of its capacity coming through redevelopment rather than development of raw land. But then, looking at the 2050 projected growth for Snohomish County in total and Everett, well, the county is supposed to grow by about 395,000. That would be an increase over current population by about 48%. Everett is supposed to grow by about 76% over its current population, which is kind of counterintuitive based on the rates of growth that we have seen in the last decade. And so, you can see here, the amount of growth for the entire county projected out to 2050 is about the equivalent of six Marysveils, or the 10 largest cities in Snohomish County in their current populations. Everett's growth, 85,000, is, again, just, I've got some other numbers to follow here. Sorry for getting too data-heavy here, but I'm just about done. Our growth, if we were going to hit our current 2035 growth target, we would have, between now and 2035, we'd have to grow by about almost 2,500 people per year, every year, to hit that target. In the last 19 years, we've only grown by less than half of that, a little over 1,000 per year. And so, what that means, if we're going to get at the larger number at 2050 of 197,000, if we were going to have a steady, straight line out between now and 2050, we'd have to grow by over 2,700 people per year. And to hit that number, that would mean about 1,400 housing units would have to be built every year. And in a city without any vacant land, in the past nine years, we've only averaged less than 300 dwelling units per year. So, it's definitely raising some questions about whether we have the capacity or not, whether the market will support that type of development. And so, that is leading into some interesting discussions that we'll have with the countywide planning policies to implement Vision 2050. And just want to say that under GMA, there is no penalty for not hitting your target, but you do have to provide the capacity in your plan for the growth, and you have to have a good faith effort to demonstrate that those targets are reasonable, possible, although there's probably a lot of room for debate over the assumptions that we use for establishing where our growth will happen and the capacity for it. So, that leads into the discussions that we'll be having with some of our neighboring jurisdictions, with the countywide planning policy update and the growth targets established in that. Buildable lands report, where we'll actually get a report of the lands that have developed since, I think, the 2011 buildable lands report, and the densities that have been developed within every city. And that'll be kind of the baseline for the local comprehensive plan updates that have to happen by 2023. If we all come up with the right numbers in our comp plans, we won't have to do a target reconciliation process, but based upon some of the numbers that we just talked about, I'd be surprised if we really could, with a straight face, say that we can hit that target of 197,000 by 2050. I guess part of the good news is that we only have to plan out to 2043 with this next update, so we don't have to go all the way to 197,000. We can probably ramp down, you know, somewhere between the 165 and the 197, but still, that's going to be a very tough task, no matter what we can create in capacity with our land use plans. The bigger question is whether or not the market will support that. And so, that's the end of my presentation. Happy to address any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Lark?
I was just going to say, you know, not so much a question, but kind of an assessment. I think one of the challenges we have in creating the marketing conditions that we have is we have an extreme lack of connectivity of the city to the major job center in the region. It's still a 99-minute commute via I-5 down to Seattle. We have an incomplete bus rapid transit network that isn't operating on dedicated lanes, and we have heavy rail that is very infrequent and early in the morning and early in the afternoon, so it doesn't really ideal for commuters. That being said, I think that greatly impacts it, and greatly impacts our capacity, you know, I mean, greatly impacts the market factors that are driving growth and development here. Beyond that, I think growth really won't happen until we get that light rail, that consistent form of connectivity to the largest job center in the region, which really is the tool that drives growth. And until we have growth, we won't have the jobs numbers because we won't have a thick enough labor market in this region to support the kind of industry that's required to drive those job numbers. So, for now, you know, one of the reasons why I personally get so, you know, worked up about parking requirements is because when we build around a system for automobiles and focus on that, we kind of create a circular, a self-fulfilling prophecy when we say, well, you know, the land use isn't set for transit. And then it's kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy or a circular firing squad which slows us down. And so, I think that is just my initial assessment on growth in Everett. I just wanted to share it for the record. I appreciate you all.
Commissioner Zlasky?
Yes, Alan. I'm just wondering how we've been doing on job growth. We've obviously come up with short of the so-called targets in population. How about in jobs?
Yeah, our job, not so bad there. Our job growth target for 2035 is 140,000, and we're, it's hard to get good, accurate numbers out of the PSRC even. They have some confidentiality agreements with certain employers that they can't disclose some of the numbers for us, and no matter who I talk to at the PSRC, I get a slightly different answer, but we're probably at about 105,000 jobs now, and within the city limits. And so, that's not quite as big a stretch as the population trying to get from 110,000 or 112,000 to 165,000 by 2035. But, yeah, we do have a lot of capacity in some of our industrial land. A lot of our industrial land is developed with warehouses. A lot of that could easily be converted to higher-density-per-acre-type land uses in our southwest industrial area, and we see that a little bit now and then. And then, of course, with light rail, at the time that it gets here, it'll certainly support the ability to get a lot more employees into our downtown area. Again, that won't be here till 2036 at the soonest.
My thought was that job growth could be a generator for population growth, too. If people can live and work in the same community, then the transit issue, the regional transit at least, becomes a little bit less important.
Right.
If we have hope for the job growth.
If we have the job growth, and maybe the higher-rise construction becomes more viable, too. Greater capacity for more housing.
Right. Thank you.
I want to have a question. When we're looking at this, I mean, obviously, it's aspirational, and I think not reality-based it. I guess maybe they've got some formulas or some actuaries working on something, but...
No, it's purely aspirational.
Okay, and so it seems quite unrealistic, I guess I'd phrase it that way. But what exactly are the obligations, then, on the city, and how do you demonstrate good faith? It just strikes me because we couldn't, I mean, we could look at it and say, sure, we could, we don't have to, we don't, there's nothing else we have to do. The capacity's there, isn't it? Or is it not? I mean, how do they, how do they show if it is or isn't?
Well, we have to show that it is with the land that we have available, and so some of the buildable lands work that we'll be doing will identify all of the land in the city, and it'll net out from that land that is unlikely to redevelop. There aren't very many vacant parcels, and so it'll be real easy to count those and what you can do on the vacant lands. But with redevelopment, that is a lot more challenging to try to estimate what can or what will happen. And we can show what can happen. We obviously can't show what will happen. But when we describe what can happen, we have to use some reasonable assumptions, and that's what usually the development community, especially in Snohomish County, because that's a bigger pool for the development community than Everett is, but will question every assumption that goes into whatever numbers we come up with for our growth capacity. And so, it's going to be scrutinized probably more closely this time than it has been in the past. This will be our third or fourth time going around with the buildable lands inventories. And so, we just have to be able to explain why we think the numbers that we come up with are reasonable assumptions. Or if we conclude that we just don't have the capacity, then we have to talk to, you know, our neighboring jurisdictions to say, we can't take this. This is going to have to go somewhere else. Who's going to take, you know, whatever that number is? How are we going to spread that around throughout the rest of the county? And of course, the, one of the main principles behind the Growth Management Act is to contain sprawl, and so that pushes, puts more pressure on expanding the urban growth area boundary. And so, that's always a very challenging dialogue on the countywide level. And there's very strong policies against expanding urban growth areas within Snohomish County in particular and under UGA in general.
So is this actually a document, then, that the city has to produce to submit to their regional council that takes specific examples, like on the corner of Hewitt and Colby, we can, I mean, we can...
But not to the regional council.
We can do this, and then say we can build a 20-story tower, I mean...
Yeah. We have to really, on a parcel-by-parcel basis, kind of identify what is considered to be redevelopable and what will not be, and then what is redevelopable, some assumptions about what could happen, what could be developed, and what, trying to, and usually when we get into the comprehensive plan update, then we have some real estate expert who will give us their prognosis about the market capacity, what the market will support, and help us to form those assumptions. We don't have to turn that into the regional council, but every document that we do produce is part of our record to demonstrate that we do have the capacity, and people can challenge those assumptions to the growth hearings board, which is not a fun thing to go through, but, you know, those are often where a lot of the debates and where the case law is established that says you don't have to hit your target, you just have to provide the capacity for it. And the growth hearings board will look to see if you've done a reasonable job of determining what your capacity is and how you can hit those targets if the market factors are all, you know, in perfect alignment.
So does that mean that if, for example, something were to be prepared and it didn't meet that, that the city would have some obligation then to, I don't know what the city would do, change height limits to add capacity or...
And, you know, you can try something like that, but if it's not financially viable at 10 stories and you increase your building height to 20 stories, does it mean you've got double the capacity, but still nobody's going to build it? Is that a reasonable assumption for how your growth can be determined? It may come to the point where if we, as a city, don't think that we have the capacity, then... viable at 10 stories and you increase your building height to 20 stories, does it mean you've got double the capacity, but still, nobody's going to build it? Is that a reasonable assumption for how, how your growth can be determined? It may come to the, the point where if, if we, as a city, don't think that we have the capacity, then it's, we have to have those tougher conversations with our neighbors about, okay, where's this going to go? Because we get, we'll get a, a number from the state office of financial management that says, at a countywide level, they'll give us a range, and we always end up picking the middle of that range on a countywide basis. And then, we have to divide that number out to amongst all the cities, and everybody then goes through that similar exercise with their buildable land supply and their land use changes and code changes that they're able to make to accommodate those numbers without expanding the urban growth area boundary. And if, if we don't think we can reasonably arrive at those numbers, then, yeah, then we have to look at other ways of distributing that growth countywide.
Commissioner Zlinski.
Alan, have the OFM targets for the county as a whole, have they been pretty close? Have they been pretty accurate in terms of the population growth?
Yeah, they have been. The, although, yeah, using the medium assumption, yeah, there's a high, low, and a medium that the state produces, and they've been pretty accurate when we've chosen the medium rate of growth. So, yeah, we get those numbers in 2022.
Commissioner Finch.
Alan, I think I understand what happens if we can't demonstrate that we can achieve those growth targets, but the allocation of growth, does it come with planning dollars or infrastructure dollars to help facilitate that growth? Is there, is there a, is there something we can get out of this?
In theory, yes.
Okay.
Theory.
In theory, yeah. But when you compete across, you know, with other cities and within four counties for those federal transportation dollars, it is really easy for big mega projects, especially in King County, to suck up all of the, or all the money for the limited amount of transportation dollars that are-
And is that part of the trade-off conversation within the PSRC about, hey, if you want us to take this population growth, then we need to be, you know, we need to be able to capture this amount of federal funding?
Well, if we have, and this is just for transportation funding, if we have a project that can actually qualify under the funding criteria, the, the federal funding criteria, something that will outcompete some of the other projects that are being submitted within the region.
When, when Everett went through the Metro Everett planning process and, and looked at the zoning, was there a study done as to the total dwelling unit capacity based on the revised zoning?
Yes.
So we kind of know what that number looks like from a downtown perspective, then?
We do, right.
And then, also, a question on one of the slides, it was the slide that showed the growth rates historically up to now, and it appears that, you know, we're not growing on track with other cities further away from the employment center, which I understand the availability of, of, you know, previously undeveloped land, much of which has been developed for single-family use, so it's a low-density use. We've got a lot of land that's underutilized. So while it may not be vacant, you know, I drive by a lot of buildings that maybe shouldn't be standing anymore, or arguably shouldn't be the highest and best used, but unfortunately, they are. And so, I think it's, in, in part, it's a question of economics. It's not really, can we accommodate the growth? Is, can we focus the attention here such that the growth wants to come here?
No, that's exactly right. It's market-driven, you know, whatever our supply is, you know. I think that we will see a lot of redevelopment of arterial corridors, you know, look at the Everett Mall. I mean, that's a vastly underutilized, big land resource with, you know, some potential for accommodating, you know, some pretty good-sized development if, if there's a market for it.
And I think that, you know, on a, on a positive note, I think that some folks are seeing a market for higher-density developments. The, I think it's the DevCo development near Henry Jackson Park. I mean, that's, I think it's DevCo.
Right.
That's a, I mean, that's a major undertaking. And so, with more developments like that, I'm guessing that the density will continue to increase, especially in the urban area.
Yes, it'll have to. It just, as long as, you know, we have a fairly constrained urban growth area, then a lot of that growth pressure will have to really be in the form of redevelopment of urban areas. And that's, I think, one of the reasons of policy in Snohomish County and under the Growth Management Act is that you look at redevelopment and other reasonable measures as determined in Growth Management Act before you can expand the urban growth area. And so, you know, up to now, within Snohomish County, it's been a lot easier just to develop the available raw land that's in the urban areas. Now that that's going to be, become scarce within all of Snohomish County, it's not just Everett. All the other cities will be faced with the same challenge for hitting their growth targets through redevelopment. This last update in 2015, every city with the exception of Everett and Linwood and Bothell had enough capacity to accommodate their numbers with their previous plans without much change. That's not going to be the case this time.
And why is that?
Just worked out that way that the capacity that they had in their pre-2015 plans kind of, coincidentally, kind of lined up with the projected amount of growth within Snohomish County and those other cities. Within Everett, because we were, you know, out of vacant land, and Linwood and Bothell, some of the numbers were higher. We were a metropolitan city. Those two were core cities, and they, under the Vision 2040, were supposed to accommodate a higher proportion of that future growth than other parts of the county.
So it's not because of something that happened in Everett specifically in the intervening time, it's just, okay. I did have one other question. If I remember back to your slide, it seemed to indicate that the largest percentage of growth from the last 10 years or so was in unincorporated Snohomish County.
Yes.
Which, so, does the Vision 2050 impose some growth requirements or capacity requirements on the county as well?
Yes, although the emphasis under Vision 2040 and 2050 is not to grow in the unincorporated areas, even if it's urban, part of the urban area. A lot of that is changing under Vision 2050 because we're going to have two light rail stations within unincorporated Snohomish County. And so, it makes sense to put the growth around that infrastructure. But outside of urban areas, which is obviously only the county, you know, the emphasis is to not encourage much growth in the rural areas.
Right, which was what I thought, and that seems to be inconsistent with that and indicative of something not working right if, if that's, if, if we are, if we're trying to discourage the sprawl and we're getting more, we're just getting more sprawl.
Well, it's, it's not, I wouldn't characterize it at all, as all sprawl, because most of that is within an urban growth area. It's just that there's a large, unincorporated urban growth area within southwest part of Snohomish County. So everything south of Everett down to the county line, there's quite a bit of, I don't remember the number, over 100,000 people that live in the unincorporated area in southwest Snohomish County. And so, a lot of that growth has happened in those areas, and there's not a whole lot of vacant land left in southwest, unincorporated urban growth area now.
Just reading through the handout, one of the policy priorities outlined by PRC, PSRC was social equity. And while the other ones are kind of, you know, housing, environmental policies, multiple transit policies, the equity component seems to be something as part of everything. What tools are we going to have when we're putting together our policy and our plan to measure the social equity impact of our policy choices? And do we have a blueprint for that?
The regional council is tasked with establishing some best practices and guidance for incorporating equity into our planning efforts. And so, you know, we might have certain ideas and things that we're trying already, but we're also supposed to get some guidance out of the regional council for best practices.
And would we be able to have some sort of, like, scorecard for these policies to assess it as we are, you know, looking at things through an equity lens? You know, what, what's the impact, you know, you know, that this policy will have? And can, how can we kind of rate it? Because we can kind of, we can look at impacts on, you know, you know, how much carbon do we expect a, you know, a development to produce? Like, how many induced drivers are we going to see? What's going to be the environmental impact? And we do, you know, we have environmental, environmental impact assessments. Do we have any sort of, are they going to roll out something as robust as that for equity?
Remains to be seen. I don't know. Anyone else? No, nothing else from staff tonight.
Good job, Alan.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess, was there any other business?
No other business from staff.
Commissioners? All right, with that, we are adjourned.